Let's start tonight, and I think we should do this on a regular basis, with the commissioners all introducing themselves. Also, good for the record.
Okay. All right. I'm Savanjak, 35, Paul Beatty.
Joseph Ziel, Chairman.
One person, 42, Duke Drive.
Dona Zolzke, 31, Fox Drive.
All righty. When we start then, we have no alternates to see. Why don't we start with the ZEO report? Excuse me, number four.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Yes, good evening, gentlemen. If you want to just take a look before you, you have a zoning enforcement report for the month of October, ending out yesterday. Some of the highlights here, pretty much what Bill and I have been working on. I'd like to bring your attention to 33 Mead Farm Road. It's about a third of the way down. Last summer, there was a construction of a garage that was put into place. And as you can see there, there's now an encroachment that has occurred onto an adjoining property. The owner of the property has been issued a notice. He's also been given four options. We're waiting for his responses to what option he is going to look to resolve this with. One of which would be a smaller parcel of land, and then applying for a hardship. This would be a self-imposed hardship, so I doubt that he would be granted that under ZBA. A larger parcel of property of about 3,800 square feet, if he was able to purchase that, would allow him to come into a conforming law with some line changes and map changes. The other option that he has been proposed with is to relocate the garage within the building setback requirements. And then the fourth one would be to remove the garage in its entirety. He came in over the summer. He started to go through the application process with land use and with building. He never completed the process, never completed the applications. Subsequently, his contractor, whatever, they put the garage up. He is only over by a very small part, but he is definitely outside of, you know, encroached upon the setbacks of the law. So we're hoping to at least know what his direction was. If he's not going to be cooperative in trying to resolve this, then I suspect we'll be back talking about this further next month. Going down a little bit further, if you'll take a look, 19 Beach Street. Just after the Thanksgiving holiday, cease and desist order was given for some work that was occurring up along the 67 corridor on what I would say would be, you almost think it's a front lot there, but that's actually the rear of the property because it's a Beach Street property. We had a productive meeting with the owner, his engineer, our engineer, building inspector and myself, last week. We're anticipating that we should have something for a site plan before the commission, hopefully for next month. So we're working in a positive to resolve that issue. I'm going to bring you back up. There was a cease and desist, or actually, it was just an informal request for the owner of 31 Silvermine Road. After working with them, you'll actually see them on the agenda this evening, and you got a presentation from the agent that's representing the owner. In a few weeks, we're going to be looking at, Bill and I will be taking a look at the 67 corridor. Everything coming from the Woodbridge Line out through the 67 Line. You'll see that we're just going to be looking site backs, setbacks, sight lines, signage out there. This just seems to be a recurring problem every year that we're having there. So we just want to try to tighten that down again, see if we can get some compliance. On Monday, actually, it was actually on Tuesday, Elise hosted a staff meeting. She saw one of our staff that works predominantly with the building side of it, Colleen, and the rest of the staff were in attendance. And we're looking to stream our application process to hopefully make it easier for our applicants and to tighten up some of the things that we feel that we'd like to see tightened up from the office aspect. So that was a productive move, and we've got plans to go forward, and we're working to those goals. An observation that some of the staff has occurred is that we all can use re-education in certain areas at different times. And we have a lot of new commission members on various new boards, predominantly with our land use. And this is a common theme across multiple municipalities with the volunteers that come in, such as yourselves, to do this. So to hopefully give a little bit of everybody a little refresher in certain things, on March 26th, the town, through the Land Compliance Office, in conjunction and hosted, actually be sponsored by the Naugatuck Valley Cod, we will have a presentation here on guide for making local land use decisions in the state of Connecticut. We're anticipating that for be about an hour and a half. Registration will start at 5:30 on that Thursday evening. We're looking forward to have everybody come to that. It's not mandatory, but we're strongly encouraging it. I would really appreciate, we've gone through a lot of work to put this together. Light refreshments will be taken care of to take that edge off. And then hopefully, we can do something every six months with just something, just, you know, an educational thing for all of us, map reading, such as those things to help us better, you know, serve the needs of the public as we go through. That's pretty much all I have at this point. If you have any questions or concerns, I'm here. And Bill and I are always available for you, as are the rest of the staff.
Thank you. Great. Anybody have any questions? All right. Has everybody had a chance to look through the minutes for the January 9 hearing? I think I had one or two minor things. The only question I had, does, did Mr. Brennan oppose the vote on the very last page? He was opposed. Or it was an abstention? He, we, okay. I didn't have anything else on the minutes for the, for the hearing. Did anybody else have any comments, questions, changes?
Mr. Chair, we can review that and then make a correction.
Yeah.
Correct.
I could be wrong about that. I'm not positive.
Should let me ask you.
Right. Okay. All right. In that case, we have a motion to approve the minutes?
That was the public hearing, correct?
Public hearing, yeah.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing minutes from...
Approve.
Approve.
You can second that.
All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed?
I wasn't here, so abstained.
Abstained, okay. So three, three in favor, one abstention. Mr. Burso is abstaining. All right, how about the regular meeting minutes? I did have one change. Are you writing them down, or just to make it for the record? Yeah, okay. Under number eight, in my comments, about halfway down, what is happening because the developer came in under the state law, I think instead of state, I would have said the affordable housing law, one thing. And then secondly, I'm quite sure what I said was the burden shifts to the commission to show, I'm sorry, after, I would have stricken, were to deny this and instead put in there, the commission would have to find that the public interest in health and safety clearly outweighed the need, which is a slight mistake. That's under paragraph eight. Then under paragraph 11, three lines up from the bottom, supported decision in accordance to, accordance with, and then the last sentence at the bottom of the page, as tempting as it is to advocate for the crowd and protect the town, actually, it was to protect them, specifically the people who are in the room, not necessarily. They are part of the town, but not the town in general.
Mr. Chair, if you can word it one more?
That was right at the bottom of the page, under number 11.
Can you just go over the... I've got to press on.
I think that's what I had. Did anybody else have anything?
Nope.
If that's the case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meetings, minutes of the meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? None. Any abstentions? And Mr. Burso abstains. Okay, number seven then, moving on to number seven, public comment. Does anybody from the public have any comments to make? Anybody from the public have any comments? I will have to tell you, if I could, that if it has to do with anything in the affordable housing, two applications, those hearings are closed. We can't...
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, good.
Yes, I know that.
Sure.
But it's now, I believe it's now for the site proposals or plans to go forward on that aspect. Is that correct?
That hearing is also closed.
All right. So we'll just make a public comment.
Okay.
And saying it was a good battle, and, you know, now, because I know it's going to go in and whatever, at this point. But as far as looking for the comparison, how they're going to go in, as far as...
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt for a second.
Can we take any comments at all on this?
As much, as much as I would like to, I'm afraid we simply can't hear. It would, it would be...
You have comments.
That's correct. If it has anything to do with these applications, I'm terribly sorry. We just can't. You've got a lot of good comments in over the three years.
Yeah, but see, the only thing is because I know we're always drawn on the fact of affordable housing, affordable housing, so our minds are just struck on those aspects and the laws relating to that, and the water and problems at that point. So now there's a lot of other little issues that are underlying that we did not present, only because everything was, the motions were on those topics. And we were always under the impression those were the only topics we had to talk about on those agendas. So now that that's, now we know that, that I know that it's past that, and it's going to kind of go forward. So now I'm more worried about, okay, your presentation of when it's going to work, depending day.
I apologize. I have to stop you. I really do have to stop you this time. We haven't even voted on these things yet. That's going to happen tonight, and I'm terribly sorry. I just can't, I cannot take anymore.
Yeah. That's just so hard.
But if there's anything else you'd like to speak about, we'd love to, love to hear.
No, the only thing I could speak about, it was really enjoyable to listen and be partake with your meetings and with your proposals that we had to deal with. And I just hope that even the town can work affordably and bring people together and that it just sort of pointed out, helped the residents in the area and improved the town and safety too, to keep it up, because I'm so worried about what the safety is going to be on that street and this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to make any comments? In that case, let's move on to number eight, 31 Silvermine, application for proposed construction site plan.
For the record, my name is Jesse Judson, license in Clersby, 52 Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut. I represent the applicant...
Don't stray far. Are we still picking them up, do we think?
Oh, okay. All right. For the record, my name is Jesse Judson, license in Clersby, 52 Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut, representing the applicant, 36 Sargeant Drive LLC, also known as Roller Cover, for their application of 31 Silvermine Road, Seymour, for site plan for building additions and site improvement. So the site's a 5.1 acre parcel located in the CIQ industrial zone, front on both Silvermine Road, Coglin Lane, just for orientation purposes, this is right where Coglin Lane meets 67th, so it's on the bottom of Coglin Lane. Presently on the site, there is a 5,000 square foot industrial building, formerly the old Picard's building. The site is presently accessed off Silvermine Road. Roller Cover primarily uses the building for warehousing. Roller Cover are the manufacturers of retractable fixed closures, type of closures like overpools, patios, restaurant type things, mainly plexiglass closures that can open and close. Most of their fabrication takes place at their vetting facilities. Again, they use this for warehousing, they store some plexiglass panels in here. When any pieces will come over, they grab a piece, they cut it aside, throw it in the truck, and bring it back over to the vetting facility for certification. Presently access in and out of the site is very difficult. The existing driveway intersects at a really bad angle with Silvermine Road for traffic coming from the south, primary direction from up to the access of the site. The intersection, the Silvermine here, 67, is pretty dangerous. The intersection is very steep, very poor sight line, so it's rarely accessed there. It's difficult to enter the site, and once they're on the site, this driveway will be completely wide, which provides limited spots for cars to be moved to. So Roller Cover proposing several things. The first, 4,700 square foot addition to the building. Addition's going to be located to the rear of the existing building. It's just going to be a steel frame industrial building, a typical steel frame building. Also proposing widening the driveway entrance, allowing vehicles to enter and exit more easily. And we're proposing to expand the driveway parking area for on-site utility. Presently, stormwater on the site is collected by two existing catch basins that pipes out to the existing detention area, the north side of the building. Stormwater is still going to be collected to the drive of those two existing catch basins. We're proposing a new catch basin and waterfall to do it, storm stuff to do it, northern end parking lot, and there that will feed down into stormwater management area, detention pond area. Back to the building addition. Submitted a preliminary architectural plan of the building. The existing building, proposed building, is going to be located in the rear. Only 38 feet of this building will be exposed to the street. There will be a garage door there. Application that shows the existing building, and the new building to be located primarily behind it. Just for your use, I provided a photo of the existing building, which is a concrete block building. The front has decorative finish to it, and just for color purposes, the new building's going to be this basic steel building, in the colors of beige and brown, to match with the existing building. Again, keep in mind, it's only 38 feet of this is going to be exposed to the street. As far as the site improvements, we're talking about widening the driveway entrance coming in, widening the parking area, the driveway down the bottom for maneuvering. In order to do that, we do have a pretty good cut, which is going to be a slope that's in front of the building. At some points, we're cutting up to eight foot depth, and such, we are proposing a retaining wall along the south side of this. The retaining wall's been varying height from two feet, eight feet high. We might have taken about over 1,600 cubic yards out of this hill, which is going to be pulled out of the front and filled. We use that to fill the north side and rear of the building, where the original driveway will be built around for access to the rear building. Again, the cut and fills are balanced on this, so there's no need for not being able to drill the truck offsite. You know, just taking it from the front, you're filling out your site. The applicant has proposed some landscaping beds. We have not provided details, detailed planting plans for that yet, but we will. We'll follow the things across the front. We have received comments from Mr. Asteriak. We're working on addressing those. We haven't had those revisions done yet for this evening. We are still in front of wetlands for stormwater management approval. So we're here tonight just to get the ball rolling here.
Is there enough room for a tractor trailer to be able to pull in and back up to that new existing, the new building? What's the distance from the corner of the existing building to the parking lot edge? There, go that way.
Up this way?
Yeah.
For probably 63 feet.
63 feet.
Like I said, they primarily, the largest vehicles they have coming in and out of here is our street unit trucks.
Yep.
And most of their stuff, if you look in the photo, most of the stuff they go back and forth with, they have to come across with landscape trailers.
Okay, I know, but I'm just saying for future use. I mean, you can't fit. Usually, usually, it's designed so it could fit.
We're driving, making as best as we can. Like I said, currently, if you look at this thing, the angle and the size of this driveway is changing, and we're using it presently.
So the answer would be no, you cannot get a tractor trailer.
You can get one in.
Okay.
Part of that, one of the things that Asteriak requested is current complex is going on there.
Right.
We are going to show that with these new vehicles. With this driveway that comes around, you know, vehicles can pull in and back in this driveway, pull out, and then come around.
Exactly, yeah. You can't get it in there.
As far as the reason why we're, we're trying to, it's a very, it's a very steep site, very difficult. It's already there existing, we're trying to make it better. It might not be perfect, but we're trying to make it better.
Is that another door around the backside, then? Right there?
There is going to be a garage door over there, but it's just for work. They have...
Easy access.
Just forget about that now. They have excavators on site and tractors and other stuff that they have.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Any other questions, anybody? I know we haven't had done much review yet, so we'll be putting...
We did receive, I did receive comments from, like I said, Mr. Asteriak, Congressman Neerak, if you want. If we haven't made...
Do you have a copy of this letter?
You should have packaged it.
Yeah. I don't know if you got mine.
I don't have yours, no.
I'll give you.
This is not...
Because I think the commission...
Do you have a copy of my comments in your letter, in your package?
I'm sorry, Jim. I thought it was for the application. I apologize. Okay.
I don't.
So we, all right, we have, then, we have received...
Okay.
Letter dated 2/6/2020 from Brian Asteriak, and also the letter dated February 13, 2020. That's the approval, that's the wetlands approval. Okay, so...
Yeah. Give me one of those underneath.
You have one from the main's letter.
I have a, this letter.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what we talked about.
Right.
Brian dated, so we can make that out. I'll have to give you a copy. So if you want to change any questions, or you're trying to review the letter.
All right, well, and then, all right, let's start with that. Mr. Asteriak, you want to give us your thoughts? Outline your thoughts?
Sure. Did you guys get my letter or no?
I got it.
We just got it.
We did get it.
I'll quickly just go through them. I know Jesse had mentioned he's working on a response for revision. Number one, I think he had mentioned that the main entrance, they're talking about moving southern curb line over to make the movement from Silvermine into it, and that's a great idea. But it turns it into a very wide driveway, so my recommendation is in fact to move northern line so that it's a proper perpendicular entrance rather than skewed entrance. And I also, the number two was adding a stop bar, center line, a stop sign, and then more important was no right turn sign, because I really do want to limit the movement going down the hill, because it is very dangerous intersection down there. We're going to be putting in, hopefully, putting in this year, some traffic control to be done, or at that intersection, to limit that movement down there. So I just think it's important to try and make everybody understand it shouldn't be going down some road. I asked if there's going to be any signs, and if there are, some on the plan, architectural plans, landscaping plan, just in the video, the site plan application. You did submit architectural plans, and I assume this is the only example of how people are expecting, or only much appreciated exposure of the new building. Number six was external lighting. I'm just asking if there's any external lighting to be proposed. If there is, then you can leave, by regulation, you can leave lighting plans that show the light lines would be. Number seven, kind of coming up from the front, was asking about, and that is, if they're going to be getting tractor trailers here, and I don't know if they will, it's going to be very difficult for them to be around here, from what I can see. So I'm just asking what the largest delivery vehicle is and how it would turn around. Number eight, for maintenance of the detention basin, I asked that an access road be identified, rated properly, so that you can get out of there and clean and maintain that basin. There is a large bituminous swale down on the eastern side of the site, and I assume that was put in back when they built the industrial parking. Do you know when that was?
It was right in the early 80s.
I think it was the early 80s.
Early 80s. I think this is one of the first buildings actually that they had.
So that essentially is a cutoff to stop the water from going down into Coglin Lane, because that's my assumption. And I also assume that probably has never been in that for the past 30 or 40 years. So I just recommend that it be expected, and it seemed out as it is going to continue to convey stormwater from the site and from this new building. Number 10 was just a suggestion to the engineer. He has decided to design a detention basin with six outlets, and his, I believe, intention was to spread the flow across the hill. In my experience, those, eventually, the majority of the flow, over time, especially if it's not maintained, will be directed into one or two of those outlets, which creates an erosion problem. So my recommendation is to just consider creating one or two outlets, and then bringing it directly down into the swales to, in a stabilized fashion. But it's just a recommendation, it's up to the engineer, I think, if it works. This doesn't work, I'm afraid, with this situation. The rest, one was a clarification, number one was a clarification of the way they calculated the stormwater calculation, so that's just a clarification, including more to the back of the line. And number 12 and 13 are just typical conditions of approval if you decide to approve. One, a final asthma should be provided. The big thing that I might have been asking is that topography is included, because I can't check stormwater compliance without topography. Can't check whether the detention pond was built properly without topography, without elevation, without injury. So there's nothing with regulations that actually require that, so I think it's a good one. And then an operation may just manage that, considering the application of stormwater. I think that should be...
What's this?
Happy to answer.
So you'll be addressing those over the next month?
Yes, yes, we've already been working on some of them.
Okay. Commissioners have any... Commissioners have any thoughts or questions?
Pretty cut and dry.
Okay. Shall we move this over to next month, and we take a, do the motion to, oh, we even need to make, make a motion to just carry it over to next month? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to carry it over to next month.
One second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? So carry it. We'll see you next month. Thanks. All right, now let's move on to number nine, Bladens Ridge Affordable Housing Development text change, the map change. Those applications we are, we have to act on tonight. We also have the site plan, where action is only required by March twelfth, but I see no reason why we can't act on all three tonight. So why don't we start by?
Chairman, I wasn't here at last meeting, and those, some of the commissioners had comments. I wasn't here because I haven't received my agenda till January twenty-fourth, and the meeting was on the ninth.
Mm-hmm.
And I was reading through some of them, but I didn't see anything that they provide some kind of playground, basketball court, or some, where all those kids are going to be in that project. Where are these kids supposed to?
Actually, if I could interrupt, at this point, the hearing's closed, so we really can't.
Yes, I can. I can say something about, I'm a commissioner. I can have my comment, because I was denied it, because my agenda didn't come in till January twenty-fourth. So I should be able to comment on.
Did you, did you listen to the tapes from last month?
No, I didn't.
Then you can't, how do you, how can you vote on this?
I got, I got the minutes, I got the minutes you got here. So I still can have a comment.
If you haven't listened.
All right, will you come up to vote? I'll decide my decision.
If you haven't listened to the minutes.
I'm telling you, when you come to the vote.
I don't see how you can vote on this application.
You'll get my vote.
Fair enough. All right, in that case, why don't we start, Keith, maybe you could.
Oh, you can do it, Matt.
He just ran away.
Apologize for that.
You got it, you got it.
Plan B.
You got it, Tom.
Plan B.
Well, when he comes back, we'll have him just give us a brief overview of what's happened between last, last month and this month.
And Chairman, you know I sat on all these meetings before, where these were discussed.
Fully aware of it.
I should have, should have a say in it. If that's the way on B, I'll make my decision come time to vote.
We'll give him another couple of minutes. And it's going to be no. Guess who we're waiting for? So Keith, if you could maybe bring us up to speed, where, from when you listened to everything that went on last month.
Okay.
Worked with staff and what you've come up with tonight.
Okay, do you want me to go over just the text change at this point?
Well, we can, we may as well. We may as well do everything at once. I mean, it's all related. Would you agree? Let's.
Maybe we should.
Do it. Want to do it separate?
Do it separately.
All right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll start with the site plan, and I'm sorry, with the text change and map change.
Okay.
You can appeal this, we can appeal that.
Yep, so we'll start with the text change, because that lays the groundwork for both the property change as well as the site plan. The text change was, as I, just to read at the top, you'll have that as well. Thank you very much. I was going to use that one, but. Oh, you, well, you don't need that. You want to see me?
The ranger there.
You do? Okay.
I'll leave you now, so. Then that'll be recognized, discovered for who I actually am.
Yeah. Gentlemen, we are going to discuss at first the text change. This is a, we're amending section three of the zoning regulations to add a new subsection called the Affordable Housing Zone. It will be a floating zone permitted within the multifamily and the R-18 zoning districts, and is here to establish, in addition to section eighteen of the zoning regulations, for section eighteen A to establish regulations governing the new Affordable Housing Zone, A H Z. These, this was proposed by the applicant, and through the process of listening to the commission, working with the applicant, hearing the public, SEF has put together this ultimate modification of their application. Other than putting together, checking, you know, checking for typos, checking for verbiage, so the shells, the shoulds become the shells, we constructed the one that you have in front of you. One of the main changes that we placed on the plan, because not only is this, excuse me, not the plan, the text change, not only is this a text change for the applicant, it's a text change for the entire community. Anyone who has a MF or an R-18 zone and qualifies with a proper amount of acreage can qualify for this text change or for this proposal. What we did was, we'll focus on eighteen A eight F, and there was a discussion on detention, onsite detention and drainage, and staff worked together and decided that we would add the last line, "All work shall conform to the recommendations and criteria set forth by Seymour Stormwater Post Construction Organants, including its design and management maintenance." And that focuses on, on the standards that we have for stormwater detention and for stormwater management and design. We think it's a good addition, and that's something that will add to the, to the overall working of the amendment. So we have put together this motion. You'll see that it's pretty lengthy. It contains all the changes that will go into the, to the text, and, and those changes will then be reflected in a final section eighteen, which you've already, you added to in the last two months. The energy efficient community is part of eighteen, and this will be added to that as well. So if you have any questions to myself or the staff, we'll be happy to answer any questions about those text changes. I think they are a culmination of some pretty intense work. Every one that you'll see as we go along is that culmination, and that, I believe it sets the standard for a very good A H Z, and like I said, if you have any questions, we're sure to answer. But I think these, it's relatively self-explanatory, and sets forth all those issues that U.S. Commissioners, the staff, as well as public, really wanted to see at the end of the day.
And I'll be reading that, all, all the motions ultimately, and we can go through them, final comments, and then take our vote. You want to move on now to the?
Oh, okay.
Do we want to move and have a vote on each one?
The map change, hear the map change?
Yeah, I think you can do any of the stuff, and, and just remember that these two.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll just read then the motion. I'll make a motion. Following motion with respect to the text change application. Planning and zoning commission resolution, application of SHC Seymour Springs LLC text change. Amend section three point O of the zoning regulations of the town of Seymour to add a new subsection six, the Affordable Housing Zone, or A H Z, as a floating zone that may be permitted within the MF and R-18 zones, zoning districts, and to establish, in addition to section eighteen, to the zoning regulations of the town of Seymour, section eighteen A, to establish regulations governing the new affordable housing zone as shown on the document entitled Proposed Text Amendment Revised, SHC Seymour Springs LLC dated December nine, twenty nineteen. And that the following is a statement of its findings. Whereas the planning and zoning commission has reviewed the application for a text change to the zoning regulations of the town of Seymour to add a new subsection six, the Affordable Housing Zone, A H C, as a floating zone that may be permitted within the MF and R-18 zoning districts, and to establish, in addition to section eighteen, to the zoning regulations of the town of Seymour, section eighteen A, to establish regulations governing, governing the new affordable housing zone, A H C, as shown on the document entitled Proposed Text Amendment-Revised, SHC Seymour Springs LLC dated December nine, twenty nineteen. And whereas the planning and zoning commission conducted duly called public hearings on October tenth, twenty nineteen, November fourteen, twenty nineteen, and December twelfth, twenty nineteen, and has considered the submitted comments of the applicant, other interested town agencies, officials, and the general public, and whereas the planning and zoning commission makes the following special findings. First, the text, the proposed text change furthers the goals and policies of the plan of conservation and development of the town of Seymour by contributing to housing diversity to meet the needs of the community, facilitating the construction of more sustainable affordable housing options, and requiring the provision of a substantial amount of open space within a development parcel. The proposed text change is consistent with the goals and policies of section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Only five point seven-five percent of the housing stock in the town of Seymour is classified as affordable housing as defined by section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed text change will facilitate the construction of affordable housing units as defined by section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes in a manner that is consistent with soil types, terrain, and infrastructure capacity, as well as adjacent residential uses, and the proposed text change will not adversely impact a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matter which the planning and zoning commission may legally consider, and any such interest that may, that may exist does not clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing in the town of Seymour. Therefore, the planning and zoning commission approved as modified at its regular meeting held on February thirteen, twenty twenty, the proposed text amendment, and the approved language will now read as follows. Add the following text to three point, section three point zero of the zoning regulations, three point zero zoning district and map. A, the town of Seymour is hereby divided into the following zoning districts. Skipping down to G, the Affordable Housing A H Z is a floating zone that may be established within the MF and R-18 zoning districts. Requirements and standards are contained in section eighteen A. A, add the following new section as eighteen A to the zoning regulations, eighteen A point zero Affordable Housing Zone, A H Z. Eighteen A one, intent and purpose. The purpose of this Affordable Housing Zone regulation is to establish regulations governing the development of a residential community that will provide the town of Seymour and the region with multifamily market rate rental units and rental units that are subject to long-term restrictions that will ensure their accessibility for moderate income and low-income households. This regulation establishes standards to facilitate such development on selected parcels on which construction will be consistent with the soil types, terrain, and infrastructure capacity. Eighteen point eight two, definitions. Affordable housing development means a housing development including, but not limited to garden apartments, townhouses, and dwellings in which not less than thirty percent of the dwelling units will be held or conveyed by deeds containing covenants or restrictions which shall require that such dwelling units be sold or rented out at or below prices which will preserve the units as affordable housing as defined in section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes for persons and families whose income is less than or equal to eighty percent and sixty percent of the area median income for at least forty years after the initial occupation of the proposed developer. Eighteen A three, eligible zoning districts and parcels. Parcels may be zoned A H Z upon satisfaction of the following requirements. A, existing zoning designation of multifamily MF district or R-18 district, provided however no more than two acres can be zoned R-18. B, satisfaction of the site requirements of section eighteen A point four. And C, satisfaction of the development standards of section eighteen A seven. D, an A H Z parcel may utilize non-contiguous property across a road for drainage and utility purposes only. Such site area shall not count towards calculation of lot area as provided in sections eighteen A point four below, and shall not count towards compliance with any required development standard provided in section eighteen A point seven. Eighteen A point four, site requirements. A, each dwelling unit shall be served by the municipal sanitary sewer system and a public water supply system. B, developments containing twenty-four or more dwelling units shall have at least two connections to a public road. One connection shall have a pavement width of at least twenty-four feet and a lot area width of at least fifty feet. The second connection may be for emergency vehicles only. Development of less than twenty-four units shall have at least one connection that meets the twenty-four foot slash fifty foot standard described above. Parcel shall have, C, parcels shall have a minimum lot area of four acres and such size and shape that a two-hundred-foot square will fit totally within its boundaries. Eighteen A point five, permitted uses. A, affordable housing development. B, uses customarily, customary, customary, customarily incidental and subordinate to the above uses when located on the same lot, such as tenant amenities and facilities management office. Eighteen A point six, affordable units. The purpose of the A H Z is to facilitate a residential development containing both market rate and price restricted units that comply with section eight dash thirty of the Connecticut General Statutes. Such price restricted, also known as affordable units, are referred to herein as affordable units. The following requirements shall apply to affordable units in an affordable housing A, affordable units shall be of construction quality that is comparable to market rate units within a development. B, affordable units shall be built on a prorata basis as construction proceeds. C, calculation of the maximum monthly payment for affordable units, for, for an affordable unit so as to satisfy General Statute section eight dash thirty G, shall utilize the area median income data as published by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, A, for a rental unit as in effect on the day the lease is signed, and B, for an ownership unit as in effect on the day a bond for deed or similar contract for sale is accepted by the seller. D, the maximum payment that the occupant for an affordable unit shall not be greater than the amount that will preserve such unit as affordable housing, as that term is defined in Connecticut General Statute section eight dash thirty G, and shall include the following. A, for, for rental housing, the maximum monthly housing payment shall include the cost of rent, common charges in the case of a rental and common interest community, if the tenant is directly responsible, heat and utility costs, including hot water and electricity, but excluding telephone and cable television. B, for ownership housing, the maximum monthly housing payment shall include periodic mortgage payments based on a commercially reasonable down payment for affordable housing buyers and prevailing interest rate at the time of sale, taxes, insurance, common charges in the case of ownership of a unit in a common interest community, heat and utility costs, including hot water and electricity, but excluding telephone and cable television. E, affordable units shall be occupied only as a tenant's or purchaser's principal residence. Subletting by tenants or renting by owners of affordable units shall, shall be prohibited. Subletting by tenants or renting by owners of affordable units shall, shall be prohibited. F, at the same time that the market rate units in an AHC development are advertised to the general public, notice of availability of the affordable units shall be provided by advertising such availability in the real estate section of newspaper of general circulation in the town of Seymour and providing notice, notice to the Seymour Board of Selectmen, Seymour Town Clerk, and the Seymour Planning and Zoning Commission. G, each deed or lease for an affordable unit will contain substantially the following provision. This unit is sold or rented as an affordable housing unit as defined in the Connecticut general statute section eight dash thirty G and is available only to persons or families whose income is at or below eighty percent or sixty percent as applicable of the area median income for Seymour or the statewide median income, whichever is less, as annually determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This development has been approved by agencies of the town of Seymour based in part on the condition that a defined percentage of the units will be preserved as affordable housing units. The restrictions related to affordability are required by law to be strictly enforced. H, the forty-year affordability period shall be calculated separately for each affordable unit in an AHC development, and the period shall begin on the date as defined at closing or initial occupancy of the unit. I, in conjunction with an application for approval of a site plan for an AHC development, the applicant shall submit an affordability plan which shall describe how the regulations regarding affordability will be administered. The affordability plan shall include provisions for administration of and compliance with the provisions of this section, notice procedures to the general public of the availability of affordable units, identification of those units which are to be designated affordable, procedures for verification and periodic confirmation of unit occupancy income, and compliance with affordability requirements. J, a violation of the regulations contained in this section shall not result in a forfeiture or reversion of title, but the Planning and Zoning Commission shall otherwise retain all enforcement powers granted by the Connecticut general statutes, including the authority under section eight dash twelve to issue notices of violation, to impose fines, and seek, to seek injunctive relief. Eighteen A point seven, development standards. A, development in the affordable, in the AHC shall be exclusively governed by the provisions of this section eighteen A and not those contained in the body of the zoning regulations unless otherwise provided in this section eighteen A. B, density. The parcel, parcel shall have a minimum lot area of forty-seven hundred fifty square feet for each dwelling unit. C, open space. At least fifty percent of the lot area shall be reserved as open space for the benefit of residents of the affordable housing development only. Open space shall include all pervious lot area, provided however it shall specifically exclude parking spaces, drive aisles, and vehicular access areas. Open space shall be designated on the site plan and distributed throughout the project in a reasonably uniform manner so that all residents may benefit. D, yards and setbacks. Principal buildings shall be set back at least twenty feet from each other or from the curb of any internal roadway. The required front yard shall be sixty feet from the property line, the required rear yard shall be seventy-five feet from the property line, and the required side yard shall be thirty-five feet from the property line. Side and rear yards that abut the residential zone shall contain a landscaped or natural buffer area of at least fifteen feet in width. The buffer shall provide a reasonably opaque barrier to a height of at least six feet. Provided however, the foregoing landscape or natural buffer area requirement shall not apply to the first one hundred linear feet on either side of a vehicular access way. E, coverage. There shall be no limit to the number of principal buildings. Total building coverage shall not exceed twenty percent of lot area. Total impervious coverage shall not exceed fifty percent of lot area. F, building height. Principal buildings shall be no more than three habitable stories, including, excluding basements and garages, and no more than forty-five feet high. Accessory structures shall not exceed a height of twenty-five feet. Building height is measured as the vertical distance from the average finished ground surface elevation to the roof's highest point. G, parking. Parking shall be provided at a minimum of one point seven five spaces per dwelling unit. Parallel parking is permitted on internal roadways, but parking spaces shall be located at least twenty feet from any parking, any property line. H, signs. Two freestanding signs, freestanding signs having an area not to exceed fifty square feet identifying the development are permitted. In addition, there may be one ground sign or wall sign per building, but not to exceed an area of ten square feet, except that a sign identifying a community building may be up to thirty square feet. Street name and directional signs are allowed as needed. I, landscaping. All areas not covered by either a principal or accessory building or pavement shall either be left in its natural state or shall have a ground cover or of grass or planting sufficient to prevent wind or water erosion and present pleasing appearance. Eighteen A point eight, utility and driveway requirements. A, there shall be a public water supply and municipal sewer system adequate to meet the needs of the development. B, all utilities shall be installed underground. C, detailed utility structures such as dumpsters, air conditioning units, transformers, and the like shall be enclosed by buildings, embankments, fences, walls, plantings, or otherwise screened, screened from pedestrian view. There is no maximum height for retaining walls. D, all common areas are to be maintained by the property owner, if a rental community, or by an association of unit owners or a designate. E, all internal roads and driveways shall be private and have an unobstructed travel lane of at least ten feet in width for each direction of travel. Maximum grade shall be twelve percent, except that grades of up to fourteen percent may be permitted for distances of less than one hundred feet. F, there shall be a storm drainage system which shall collect, carry off, and dispose of surface water runoff. On-site detention shall be required only if the increase in storm water runoff cannot be accommodated by the storm drainage system as it exists or may be improved by the applicant. All work shall conform to the recommendations and criteria set forth by the Seymour Stormwater Post-Construction Ordinance, including, including its design, management, and maintenance. Eighteen A point nine, application procedures and requirements. An affordable housing application seeking a change of zone shall include submission of a conceptual site plan describing the proposed development's total number of residential units and their arrangement on the property, and the proposed development's roads and traffic circulation, sewage disposal, and water supply. So that represents first motion, that's the motion to approve the text change. Well, we need, does anybody have any comments at this point?
I don't.
Pardon me?
I'll second.
No, sorry. So I made the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Right, in section eighteen A said, you're talking about open space, you're talking about maybe a grassy area where you got no playground area for the kids, you got ninety units in it. I figured, I think from twenty-four units up, there should be a designated playground area for the kids to play, not just a grassy area. It could be a playground. If you don't have that, you're gonna have trouble, and they're gonna be in the neighborhood, on the street, and all over.
Mr. Chairman. Walter, there was a playground area added to the plans, if you were paying attention.
It says open space, it doesn't say designated playground. I'm saying designated playground.
Okay, I thought you were asking.
Asphalt with playground for kids can play, like with a basketball court or something for small kids, you know, small swings or something like that. Grassy area, kids ain't gonna just stay in that grassy area, they're gonna be all over the neighborhood too, and what do you have? Nothing but trash and trouble.
Walter, when the plan comes in, that's when you can address that, for that project.
I figured that should be put in there.
Does anybody else have any other thoughts or comments? We, we went through, you know, our discussions last, last month, through most of the plan. Staff put together this draft, motion that I just read in. And, let's see, I know that I discussed, and Tom, you discussed, we all discussed what we felt was in our record, with, you know, the testimony we heard, the, the application, the comments from the public. And we discussed that in the event that we were, there would be a, a vote to deny the application, that, of course, the reasons would have to be stated, and they would have to be put in terms that address a substantial health and safety reason in the record that outweighs the need for affordable housing. Did you have a comment?
No, I think.
No, we're good.
Which was correct, that you could, you could put that in the site plan, but if you put it in the text, then it would be required, and there might be a situation where it wasn't necessary, you know, how many units could be trapped.
So, I think, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Yeah, I made a second, I agree. You read the motion, I second it.
All in favor of approving the text change?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Is there a reason for your opposition?
I gave my reason. Children's safety. Just a grassy area doesn't give a designated area for these kids to play, and it's a safety concern. You have a lot of cars running in and out of there, you got a paved recreation area where these kids can play, fenced in, of course, not a hazard for the children in that area. You got ninety units in there, and all you say is open space there.
All right, well, anyway, we have three, three in favor, one opposed, so that, that carries that, we are approved. The second, move on now to.
What a shame.
The map change.
The map change. That was a long, that was a long motion.
Yeah.
A little scratch.
This is gonna be neither.
Right. So, if you'd like to give us the background.
Sure. In order to have a floating zone, you have to have a zone of which the floating zone is going to land. The applicant had put forward an application for a zoning map change. The new change is, will be a new district as an affordable housing zone district as the district passed, consisting of properties of a dip of approximately ten point six plus or minus acres of property. The land affected is owned and located on the following streets. Twenty Spring Street, which is owned by SHC Seymour Springs LLC, Sixteen Smith Street, SHC Seymour Springs LLC, and Seventeen Smith Street, Seymour Springs LLC as well. Smith Street is, is the R-18 lot, and that is from R-18 as AHC. The lockdown on Twenty Spring Street is MF, multifamily to AHC, and probably across the street on Smith Street is R-18 as well. It's pretty self-explanatory. If we have any questions, we'd surely like to answer you, but this was, this is, this application has not been modified by staff, it's the same as the one that we had.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion to, to approve this? If you'd like. Some, maybe some, because someone could read it if they, if they'd like. Who's gonna do it?
I'll make a motion to approve the map change.
So you'll have to read in the whole thing.
I have to read the short thing, you ready?
The short one.
You can, okay. Do you have to ask for water? You can read.
No, it's only two pages.
You read it in, Joe.
All right, I'll read it. Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution, Application of SHC Seymour Springs LLC Zoning Map Change. To change a new zoning district known as the Affordable Housing Zone, AHC, certain properties consisting of ten point six plus or minus acres of property, and the land affected, and the land affected is owned by and located on the following streets. SHC Seymour Springs LLC, is the name of the owner, Twenty Spring Street, and SHC Seymour Springs LLC at Sixteen Smith Street, and SHC Seymour Springs LLC at Seventeen Smith Street. Did I say sixteen Smith?
Yes, you did.
I did, okay. And that the following is a statement of its findings. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the application for zoning map change of SHC Seymour Springs LLC, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted duly called public hearings on October 10, 2019, November 14, 2019, and December 12, 2019, and has considered the submitted comments of the applicant, other interested town agencies, officials, and the general public, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the following special findings. The proposed zoning map change furthers the goals and policies of the plan of conservation and development of the town of Seymour by contributing to housing diversity to meet the needs of the community, facilitating the construction of more sustainable affordable housing options, and requiring the provision of a substantial amount of open space within a development parcel. Only five point seven five of the housing stock in the town of Seymour is classified as affordable housing as defined by section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes. The proposed zoning map change will facilitate the construction of affordable housing units as defined by section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes in a manner that is consistent with soil types, terrain, and infrastructure capacity, as well as adjacent residential uses. The proposed zoning map change is consistent with the goals and policies of section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes, and the proposed zoning map change will not adversely impact a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matter which the Planning and Zoning Commission may legally consider, and any such interest that may exist does not clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing in the town of Seymour. Therefore, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved as modified at its regular meeting held on February 13, 2020, the zone map change as changed as shown and delineated on the sketch set forth below. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, three in favor, one opposed, opposed, so carry. Shall we now move towards the site plan? Okay, we have a report from the, from the Wetlands Commission. Okay, that's part of the record.
Letter outlining the decision, the incidental.
Keith, you wanna give us a little background?
Okay. As you've received, these are, this is the report which contains not only the wetlands findings, but also those site plans that were modified for the wetlands approval. And that's what you'll find in, right here. We have made a motion that's based on the findings of the, or the discussion of the commission, the actions of the applicant. commission, the actions of the applicant, the reaction of the, of the, of the public, as well as input from the town planner, from the town engineer, building official, zoning enforcement officer, and our town attorney. So there, you'll find that this is just as, as, as complete, as long as the previous text change. I do want to point out to you that this is a proposal as we, as we sit today, to actually construct a residential community known as Blayden's Ridge that will provide the Town of Seymour and the region with multifamily affordable and market rate residential rental units under, in compliance with Section 8-30 of the Connecticut General Statutes and the Affordable Housing Zone. Said development includes 90 two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments associated parking and landscaping on the following streets, 20 Spring Street, 16 Smith Street, and 17 Smith Street as well. Do want to make a note that we do want to do and not, and not tomorrow think about it, is that we need an effective date for the text change? So that's something that we might want to, that we will want to revisit after this discussion. Because you want to set a date. I mean, we forgot about it last time and remembering it.
Somebody remind us.
Don't wait.
It was over, it was almost the fence. Grabbed it right near the wall. Good outfielder. So that's something else. But this is our site plan application. We took it very seriously as staff. You can see that section that both conditions one and conditions two seem to be not only a reiteration of, of what you've probably discussed before, but a reiteration to understand what's involved, what the building's going to look like, what the landscaping is going to look like. These are all checks in order to make sure that those site plans are, are built precisely like they were set. Those buildings are represented in the testimony that the applicants had. Those, that playground which was, which was reported by the landscape, excuse me, by the architect gets placed into the plan as well. So you'll see that as you read along, some of it might be duplication in some ways, but I think it's a way to assure that the plans that we've reviewed over the time are, are built that way. There are 20 conditions that are placed on the, on the plan, each having to do with various aspects of the site plan and the need to not only make sure that the construction is done right, but the DEEP application for the endangered species is done correctly and all the other ones are, are constructed within the mean, within those parameters that the applicant had set forth during the public hearing. So you'll see that it's, it's not as long as the, as the text change, but it does have, it is specific in its nature and there are 20 conditions. So our recommendation obviously is to approve it with the following 20 conditions.
In that case, I'll read the motion approved into the record. Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution, Application of SHC Seymour Springs LLC Site Plan Application. Proposal to construct the development of residential community known as Blayden's Ridge that will provide the Town of Seymour and the region with multifamily affordable and market rate residential units in compliance with Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes and the Affordable Housing Zone. Said development includes 90 two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments and associated parking, landscaping, and site improvements. And the land affected is owned by and located on the following streets. SHC Seymour Springs LLC for 20 Spring Street, SHC Seymour Springs LLC for 16 Smith Street, SHC Seymour Springs LLC for 17 Smith Street. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed applications for site plan approvals to construct the residential development known as Blayden Ridge, Blayden's Ridge, consisting of 90 two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments and associated parking, landscaping, and site improvements, the site plan application. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted duly called public hearings on December 12th, 2019, and January 9th, 2020, and has considered the submitted comments of other interested city agencies, officials, and the general public. And whereas the approved site plan application is more particularly described in the building design plans, site development plans, and reports submitted in connection with the application, and such related materials, reports, and exhibits constituted in the application file as may be amended to be consistent with representations made during the public hearings on December 12th, 2019, and January 9th, 2020, and conditions contained herein. Together, all of these documents are referred to herein as the building architectural and site plans. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the following special findings. The approved site plan application conforms to the standards, goals, goals, purposes, and specific objectives of the Affordable Housing Zone, AHZ. The approved site plan application conforms to the standards, goals, purposes, and specific objectives of Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes. The building design and site development plan further the goals and policies of the Plan of Conservation and Development of the Town of Seymour by contributing to housing diversity to meet the needs of the community, facilitating the construction of more sustainable, affordable housing options, and requiring the provision of a substantial amount of open space within a development parcel. The approved site plan application will not adversely impact a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matter which the Planning and Zoning Commission may legally consider, and any such interest that may exist does not clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing in the Town of Seymour. Only 5.75 of the housing stock in the Town of Seymour is considered affordable housing within the meaning of Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes. The approved site plan application will result in 28 additional affordable housing units in the Town of Seymour within the meaning of Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Now therefore, be it resolved that at its regular meeting on February 13, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved as modified, the site plan application of SHC Seymour Springs LLC subject to the following conditions. Number one. All work shall strictly conform to all presented building architectural and approved site plans unless otherwise approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission or for minor modifications by Planning and Zoning Commission staff. This would include all plans identified by Condition Two, as well as the traffic, traffic impact study, Blayden's Ridge Apartments prepared for HSC, SHC Seymour Springs LLC by Benesh dated July 2019, revised to 12/4/19. Photometric calculation plan, Project Spring Street Sheet L-1 prepared by Illuminate dated 12/11/19. Elevations and floor plans presented by Janet Rozeski from Gooding Architecture, 12/12/19, Seymour P&amp;Z Public Hearing, showing three types of traditional residential style buildings having general neutral colors, white and gray. Their square footages, number of bedrooms, as well as their sloped roofs, asphalt shingles, vinyl siding, vinyl windows, along with a gazebo. Shared walkways, picnic areas, and a children's playground. Landscape plans presented by landscape architect Matthew Pop, 12/12/19, Seymour P&amp;Z Public Hearing. And all latest revisions submitted by the applicant, including existing sanitary sewer analysis, site storm water management plan, storm water management and erosion control plan prepared by JPGA Engineers and Surveyors Bethany Connecticut for Seymour Springs LLC, Jerry Kelly. Number two. Yep? Okay, that's my bad. Correct that to Jerry Kiley, K-I-L-E-Y. Number two. Applicants shall comply with all requirements and conditions of approval contained in the resolution of approval, approved by the Seymour Inland Wetlands Commission on January 27th, 2020, based on, based on plans submitted for Blayden's Ridge, Section 8-30G Affordable Housing, to construct 90 two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments and associated parking, landscaping, and site improvements. These include plans by JPGA Engineers and Surveyors Bethany Connecticut prepared for Seymour Springs LLC, Jerry Kiley, including existing conditions plan, C-1, site development plan, page C-2. Drainage and utility plan, C-2A, each dated 2/25/15, revised to 1/13/20. Site development plan, C-2B, dated 3/16/15, revised to 1/13/20. Erosion control plan, page C3, plan and profile pages C-4, C-5, C-6, C-7, C-8, each dated 2/25/15, revised to 1/30/20. Plan and profile page C-8A dated 1/18/17, revised to 1/13/20. Site layout plan, C9, storm water management underground systems, C10. Typical details pages, C11, C12, each dated 2/25/17, revised to 1/13/20. Sanitary sewer details pages, C13, C14, dated 12/6/19. Phasing plan page C15 dated 11/6/19, revised to 1/13/20. Number three, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall implement the native species protection plan prepared by a licensed environmental consultant and approved by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP. Number four, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall amend the phasing plan to incorporate all 13 recommendations outlined in the letter from Dawn M. McKay of DEEP dated October 24, 2019. Five, a site monitor shall be required to ensure that soil erosion measures are maintained and adapted during construction. The site manager, monitor shall be a licensed professional engineer or applicable certification such as a certified inspector of sediment and erosion control, CISEC, who will provide regular reports to Planning and Zoning Commission staff. Number six, the southwestern entrance shall be used for emergency access only. Permanent signage and gating shall be installed at the southwestern entrance indicating emergency access only and cannot be utilized for construction purposes. The location of said signage and gating shall be generally consistent with the approved building and site plans and is subject to the approval of the town fire marshal. The applicant shall obtain final approval from the town fire marshal for said signage and gating prior to the issuance of a building permit. Except for the construction of the southwestern entrance, said entrance shall not be utilized for construction purposes. Number seven, narrative shall be updated to show phases four and six switched as shown on the revised plan. Number eight, the final plan shall show the detail of the proposed riprap swale in compliance with the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control for a permanent lined waterway. Number nine, all items that are claiming to be pervious, pavers, et cetera, shall be designed to have a minimum of eight inch deep crushed stone reservoir beneath the final treatment, and the joint sand should be a loose chip stone. Number 10, there should be no stockpiling of material on any areas with proposed storm drainage systems capable of being infiltrated by said material. Number 11, placement of fire hydrants shall be in accordance with NFPA 242013 and determined by the Seymour Fire Marshal in consultation with the Water Company. 12, final signage plans shall conform to the AHZ standards and be subject to approval by Planning and Zoning Commission staff. 13, locations reserved for crushing and stockpiling of material shall be subject to final approval by Planning and Zoning Commission staff. Number 14, during phase two, the road shall be paved a minimum of 200 feet with a binder course prior to continuing the next phase. An anti-tracking apron shall be constructed at the end of this paved entrance during future phases. Number 15, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a construction, staging, and management plan to ensure safe, adequate, and convenient vehicular traffic circulation and operations, pedestrian circulation, and protection of environmental quality through the mitigation of noise, dust, fumes, and debris, subject to final approval of Planning and Zoning Commission staff. Said plan shall address but not be limited to deliveries and pickups from the job site, truck routing, measures to control dust, staging areas for materials, and construction worker parking, as well as temporary measures requiring the timely removal of construction debris and, debris and/or litter from the job site. Number 16, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a performance bond, certified check, or other form of surety in a form acceptable to the Seymour Town Council to secure the timely and proper performance of onsite sediment and erosion construction controls, drainage, landscaping, professional supervision, along with 15% contingency. A detailed estimate of these costs shall be supplied to Planning and Zoning Commission staff prior to the submission of the performance surety and shall be subject to review and modification. The performance surety shall be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission staff prior to the start of any site activity and the issuance of a building permit. Prior 17, prior to the release of surety, transfer of title, and issuance of signature authorizing the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit a drainage maintenance agreement, ensuring the full and proper function of all installed drainage facilities to Planning and Zoning Commission staff for review and approval. The manual shall include biannual inspection reports that will be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission staff upon completion. Upon approval by staff, said drainage maintenance agreement shall be recorded on the Seymour land records. Number 18, a portion of the existing pavement on Spring Street intersecting with the southwestern entrance shall be repaved from five feet east to five feet west of the new drainage structures being installed. Number 19, in accordance with the traffic, traffic impact study prepared by Benesh revised through December 4th, 2019, the applicant shall install new stop signs and stop bars at the intersection of Spring Street at Smith Street and repave the roadway within the confines of the always stop. The applicant shall install said improvements prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Final plans and specifications for said improvements shall be subject to the approval of Planning and Zoning Commission staff. Number 20, a final as-built certified to both A2 and T2 accuracy standards shall be submitted prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. What's the motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I have one other question on the first page.
Of that, of the last one?
Okay.
I just have one other correction on the first page where it says city, it should say town.
Okay, well, let the record reflect that change. Any comments?
I don't.
Go ahead.
All right, you say children's playground, is this going to be fenced in? So no children chasing a ball runs out into the parking area for safety reasons?
Per the plan.
What was that?
It's as shown on the plan.
It's shown on the plan, fenced in?
It is as shown on the plan, but in accordance with the plan.
Well, can we see the plan before we vote on this?
We've had the plans for... Is it bold, am I going to say something? We've had the plans since... Well.
For many reasons, I'm taking the children's safety. You know, you got a lot of kids playing. There's not fenced in area. They're going to roam, they're going to run right into the parking. They're going to roam, they're going to run right into the parking area, and that's the last thing you want to happen. Some kid get injured or killed.
How's your wife doing? How's the wife doing?
She's doing good.
Yeah, that's amazing.
I know, I know.
Did you take that to the request? You don't take it to the request? I mean, why just rush up?
But that's a good thing, once it goes that way, it's, it's so...
You can add that to the condition if that's up to the...
I'd like to have it added in.
If, if... The location of the, of the playground area isn't in that spot. No.
No. I think we should amend and make sure it's fenced in for safety reason for the kids.
Well, where it's located?
I just represent that there's no...
Where it's located, where is located?
Still, it should be a fenced in area for small kids. They're going to run, probably no parents watching or nothing. It should be, like mostly projects, those areas are fenced in. Last thing you want to do is have some kid get hurt. Right?
I'm just standing here hoping for the map.
The location of where this is...
I don't care where it is, it should be fenced in.
Well, Walter, the location, I feel, the location where this is...
I don't care what you feel. I care, I'm thinking of kids' safety. That's just like you didn't put it in there in the text change. We should add an automaticity in there.
I have no interest in making any changes.
I don't think there is.
Do you have any interest in making any changes?
No.
In that case, we have a motion, we have a second.
Thank you for your...
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, no.
I'll second that.
No, I, I second it. We voted.
You already seconded.
Aye, aye, aye.
No. So we are...
And I'd like to thank the board because you're not thinking of children's safety and shame on you. Got to laugh about it. You think it's a big joke? Would you like have your kid get hurt or something?
Walter, you should have been here last month, Walter, you ever think of that?
Did I get agenda? I got it the 20th of January, so shut up about it. I'm tired of you.
I think we're on correspondence?
We have my agenda.
A big joke.
There you go, Joe.
All right.
I'm laughing about it.
Correspondence, do we have any, is there any correspondence to deal with?
Mr. Chairman, before you go, um, the effective date.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we got to do it back, yeah.
All right, well, what do you, what do you, what do we, what's...
We have to do that, but effective date, keep going. Just, you're going to choose a date where you want to add it.
Is that just for the text change or...
I think you have to make a motion to add it to the agenda. It's not a special meeting, but you still need, you need three of your members to say, okay.
Right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to add the text, effective date for the text change amendment.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now, now, we agree then.
What do you think, what kind of date?
Okay, what date you want?
You think is appropriate? February 14th?
We got 20 days from now, doesn't it?
It doesn't have to be 20 days from now, does it?
No, but you'd like to have 20 days, especially with the voices...
Got to put it in papers, okay.
It may be next week.
Set March 20th?
April 1st.
April 1st?
I want to have the motion.
I'll make a motion for the effective date for the text change to be April 1st.
Wait. And the, yes.
And the, two more. I'd like to make a motion to set the effective date for April 1st for the text change and the map change for Blayden's Ridge or...
For the affordable housing.
For the affordable housing zone.
Change and map change.
Correct.
That works.
April 1st.
Okay, any, do we have a second?
Close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. Okay, so are we done with this?
So...
All right, let's move on to correspondence, none?
Oh, you know, I think, oh, well, okay. We need to, for the hot dog truck or the, we need to make a public hearing, we should set a public hearing for the hot dog, for the, for the temporary food vendor that we've been pushing off for forever. We got to start for next month.
We have a final draft of regulations you guys have to agree on.
Well, I already got it all set, I know what it, I know what I want. I just want, we need to get the...
Let's put it on the agenda.
I want to put it on the agenda to have...
You have to develop, you have to develop the information to bring together.
Okay.
So you might want, the commission members might want to start thinking about that.
Didn't we have that drafted up till already?
No, we had some correspondence and some research done, but there was never anything in writing this.
So we'll put on the agenda.
So you want to put it on the agenda.
Agenda for next month, we'll talk about what we think we want to do.
Okay, all right, yeah, so the goal for next month would be to have that...
Have a draft set.
Have a draft, have a draft set of regulations for the next meeting, and then we'll set the town hearing for, off of that, for the following month, and at least we get that off, okay.
Now for the most controversial.
Oh, yeah, I make a motion to adjourn.
12.
Oh. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done. Your turn.